July 4th, 2020, 6:15 PM, open session meeting, they're planning board. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the agenda, any discussion?
Yeah, Jeff, did you want to talk about removing, uh, continued hearings for, uh, 14 Washington Street? And Air Solar Two, I believe we have information that those should be deferred to continue to the next meeting?
Exactly, I would, thank you very much, Jonathan. Um, so that everybody's on the same page, we received communication from, uh, Kyle Burchard that the, um, he has asked for continuations for each of the gen- each of the items on the agenda, that he is, um, going to, that he was gonna present to us this evening, and he, um, he did give me a call earlier today, and, um, I said, you know, Kyle, by all means, one less phone call in your life is, is not a bad thing. Is he on the phone? No, he's not. So, he has asked for continuations on the, um, 14 Washington Street and the Air Solar Two B information, um, until our next meeting. Uh, he also did tell me that he's putting together an NOI for the, this is as general information for the board members. He's putting together an NOI for the Conservation Commission, there has been a slight change in the plan, he didn't go into the details yet. So, with that change, any, any con- any discussion? Okay. So, with the change that, we will do a continuation for, um, 14 Washington Street and Air Solar Two B. Moved and seconded with the changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye. Any opposition? I should say if any opposed? Fantastic, so, let's jump right in. We do not have any bond releases tonight, thank you for having it on the agenda, Mark. Next on the list on our agenda is an approval not required for 33 Sandy Pond Road, two lots, David E. Ross Associates. Do we have somebody here? It says Jason's iPhone.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, no, I, I can see your hand, Jason, thank you. Um, can you, um, introduce yourself, please?
Sure, how you doing, everybody, tonight? Um, my name is Jason Boyet, uh, from David E. Ross. And, yeah, tonight representing for, uh, RD Canard Homes Incorporated.
Hey, Jason?
Yes.
Your voice is clipping a little bit, could you speak a little slower, see if that solves a problem?
Sure.
Thanks.
My name is Jason Boyet, and I'm here from David Ross Associates. Uh, and I'm representing, representing for RD Canard Homes, Inc.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That, yes, I, I think half got lost the first time and the second half came through the second time, so, we're living with technology, thank you.
Um, so in front of you, um, it's two lot A and R, Sandy Pond Road, and both lots meet the minimum frontage and area required. Uh, they both access, and, um, that's basically what the plan is, it's just creating two lots.
Fantastic. And I think it says on the plan, both those houses that are currently there are gonna be raised.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it's good. Thank you. Any questions from board members?
This looks pretty straightforward, uh, I just wanted to ask Mark Archimbo, is there, are there any sensitivities we should be aware of, or is, is it as straightforward as it looks?
Um, believe it or not, it is as straightforward as it looks.
Good. How do we get it signed?
I'm sorry, Ken?
Technically, how do we get, sign the plan?
Um, that's an interesting question, because, um, I have been receiving documents from Heather and signing them, and doing my best not to forget to get them back to the town hall. Um, I guess the question is, what would be the recommendation? We, we all need to sign a single document, correct?
Uh, three, maybe.
Well, yes, but we all, all of us, to be, to be honest. Mark, you got any, uh, suggestions?
Uh, well, I would suggest, um, you know, Heather, Heather is listening in, I'm not sure if she can talk, uh, to her computer right now, but, uh, perhaps, um, you know, making an, an appointment with Heather to state that you will be outside the town hall at a certain time on a certain day, and we can bring the plan down and you can sign it remotely, I mean, sign it while we wait. Might be the best way to do it.
Yeah, I'm here, so any, um, I'm here at the time, town, town hall's open, anytime anyone wants to come down, um, I can bring the plans down for you guys to sign.
Will that work for board members?
Yeah.
Works for me.
Okay. Um, I may be the one, uh, who's a little hard to get ahold of, you all know my schedule, I leave early in the morning and I get back sometimes late in the day, but I'll make it, I'll make it, I'll make a, uh, concerted effort to get it done as quickly as possible. Okay.
We have the, the MyLau original and the number of copies sitting in the office now?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Fantastic. So, uh, without any further ado, I will accept the motion to accept the A and R.
I made the motion that we accept the A and R as presented to us for, um, 33 Sandy Pond Road.
Um, this is actually dated June 2020. Will that be okay with you, Mr. Diskin?
That's fine.
Thank, actually, it has a, uh, a handwritten date of 6/15/2020 on the,
With the stamp?
With, on the surveyor's stamp.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. Um, I have a motion and a second, do we get a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very, uh, no abstentions, thank you very much. Jason, great job.
So we, hold on, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
So we accepted the plan, meaning we accept that its application is complete, but don't we have to vote to endorse the plan, or is that it?
I think it's the A and R.
To endorse, I think that's what you were meaning to do with the word "accept", but for, for an A and R, it's endorsement is the formal term.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that's it then?
Yep. I'm more than happy, Heather, if you want to put the word "endorse" in, in place of "accept", I think that's what we intended.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Well, have a great evening.
Thanks, thanks, Jason, okay.
You guys don't wanna stay for the fun? Blah.
Have a good night.
I, I, I have to tell you, and I know Kyle's not in the room, or in the virtual room, I bet you every one of you breathed a sigh of relief when you heard that a couple things on the agenda were gonna fall off for the night, right? Um, so, uh, next on our,
But we have to be here when they come back, so for the, must have to do this.
This is true, but,
Tonight, I'm happy.
We have to, we have to take our, we have to take our gifts where we get them. Um, continue public hearing for special permits three dash five Park Street, the motion to continue, please. Do we need to move to continue?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for, uh, the special permits, uh, requested for three to five Park Street.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go. I don't think we need to do that, but let's do it, okay. Uh, lots been going on, Mark.
Yes, I, I will give a, a quick update. Uh, basically, at the last planning board meeting,
Excuse me, Mark, I'm sorry. Attorney Givens and Robert Gardner are joining the meeting along with David Berry for this, um, topic, correct? And Thomas Gardner's here also.
Correct. Good evening, board members, Tom Givens and Bob Gardner here at my office.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great, please go ahead, Mark.
Yes, at the, uh, the special permit, again, to refresh everybody's mind, is to allow for the parking that would normally be required in three to five Park Street to be located off-site, um, in this case, at the Worthingdale Realty Parking Lot, which is across Main Street from the property. At the last, uh, planning board meeting, a question arose from a member of the board as to the interpretation of the word "use" in section 3.57A of the zoning bylaw that states, quote, "That for any use requiring a special permit from the planning board, the special permit and site plan application shall be combined as a single submission." Uh, so I spent a lot of, uh, time researching this, uh, and conferring with Town Council, and also Judy Barrett, who was the planning consultant who assisted the town in writing the bylaw back in 2018. And, uh, you know, to, to make a long story short, uh, at least in the, uh, the eyes of the author of the zoning bylaw, she stated in an email to me that, quote, "Special permit for use does not extend to a special permit to weigh parking requirements, reduce setbacks, and other types of dimensional or intensity relief provided for in the zoning bylaw. Example, the ability to weigh parking requirements in a business district could apply to any use allowed in the district, not just retail." Focus on the land use. Uh, and when I followed up with a phone call this morning, she said, yes, it was her intent in writing that language, that the word "use" refer to the uses, you know, the overarching uses that are listed in section 5.2, the Table of Use Regulations, as well as any large-scale use that would appear in an overlay district, such as the Aquifer Overlay District, or the wireless transmission overlay district, et cetera. Uh, so, you know, her strong opinion is that the word "use" applies in those cases, and that if a site plan, if a use of a site does not require a special permit, as listed in, uh, the table, then it is allowed, and the planning board would be allowed to separate out a special permit for relief, whereas, uh, Attorney Givens put it, uh, for, uh, considerations, to separate that out from the site plan, so. And, uh, our Town Council, um, was a little bit stricter in her interpretation, but she believed that the phrase, uh, could use a little bit more clarification, and that the planning board isn't able to make an interpretation of how that term "use", what, what it means in, in terms of this application. Uh, so I know that Attorney Givens, uh, sent a letter to the planning board as well, basically reiterated the opinion that we later received from Judy Barrett. Uh, so I, you know, with that said, I would just, I think we should discuss, discuss the interpretation of 3578 first, and then, I have, I have some motions ready to share with the board, which would ratify that understanding of 3578. Uh, but before that, it might be good for the various parties to discuss that.
Sorry about that. Um, Mr. Givens, would you like to take a moment?
Yes, good evening, board members, Tom Givens for, uh, Bob and Tom Gardner. I, I don't know if everybody had a chance to, uh, review the memo I had submitted?
We did.
Great, so, so, my argument is similar to what Judy Barrett, and I think what Mark had, had determined, that the use, when it comes to 3.5.7 would be if, if the use required a special permit, as I say, apartments over, uh, commercial isn't allowed or permitted use in that district, so it's my opinion that 3.5.7 would not apply for the special permit for parking under section nine. If, if, if anybody disagrees with that, or wants anyone to further have any particular questions, I'd be happy to, to handle it, other than repeating my, my memo, but I'd be happy to do that also.
Thank you, I, I, yes, Ms. France.
Um, since, you know, I, I brought up the issue at the last meeting, I think it's appropriate for me to address this here, that I'm content, I read the memo that, uh, the attorney, Attorney Givens submitted, and I've looked at the, uh, email, which Julie Barrett made her comments, I've read Mark's, um, report, and I'm content that, yes, the 35.7A, uh, does not apply to use in the sense that we had originally thought, and it is restricted to the actual land use as reflected in the table, and doesn't reflect the ancillary qualities attached to the initial use. Thank you, I'm, I'm, I'm on board.
Thank you. Any, any other further comments from the board members? I'd like to say one thing, Mr. Givens, I enjoyed reading your memo, and I re- I was reminded of, my father was an attorney. And when Judy's memo came through this morning, agreeing with it, my father used to say two things, one was, "Two wrongs don't always make a right", but I think in this case it might. And the second was, um, the discussion of the making of laws is like making sausages. As I read, I enjoyed your memo, and Mark said to me, "You're gonna have to read it three times."
Yes. I agree, it does take, zoning is, is difficult, but sometimes you have to keep reading the same thing. I know you get to your edge, but I am smiling at your comments.
Yeah, that's, it's quite all right, and I, I think, I think, I know you just, you know, I'm just having a little bit of fun, but thank you very much. Other comments from the board, the board members? Okay, Mark did go through the process of putting together some, um, uh, verbiage for this, and I know, Mark, I think you sent another copy this afternoon?
Yes, I did.
And I left it on the printer at the office, I just realized, I'm sorry.
I, I will read it slowly, I will read the findings slowly, and my recommendation is that the board, uh, vote on these and, and make a motion to, you know, uh, endorse what I just said, and I, you know, for those of you who did receive my email in time, you can follow along. Uh, so these are findings, just to set up the, uh, the public hearing for the case itself, so this is not approving the plan, per se, but it's the findings to get, you know, to resolve this issue of 3578. Uh, so, my first finding, "The Air Planning Board finds that the term 'use' as applied in section 3.57A of the Air Zoning Bylaw refers to major categories of use, such as those listed in section 5.2, Table of Use Regulations, and overlay districts, and not items such as parking requirements and other standards that the planning board may modify via special permit, period." Uh, finding number two, item, item 1.6 in the Table of Use Regulations, "Apartments above the ground floor of a commercial building is a permitted by right use in the downtown Park Street Form-based code district, requiring site plan review, but not a use special permit from the Air Planning Board." Number three, "Therefore, the only site plan-related considerations pertinent to the special permit request to allow the required parking for three to five Park Street to, to be located off-site pursuant to Air Zoning Bylaw Sections 9.14B and 9.15C5 have to do with the ability of the receiving lot, the Worthingdale Realty Lot, to accommodate the necessary number and layout of parking spaces." So I believe that those three findings, uh, will bolster any subsequent decision that the planning board may make in this case.
Thank you. Um, any discussion on any of the findings by any of the board members? He can't see me looking at him. Mr. Diskin? I'm actually looking at you.
I'm just trying to make sure that the referenced 9.14B and 9.15C5 are the correct references, that's all, just for clarification.
Thank you.
Um, so we've got 9.14B, which is the special downtown business district, special permit, and 9.15C5.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was 9.15D, shared parking. Not,
Can't hear you, Mark.
Uh, yes, sorry. Okay, yes, add 9.15D to the two other ones, sorry, I, I missed that one too, we have so many different section references, so it is, 9.14B is correct, 9.15C5 is correct, but we should also add 9.15T, the, uh, to the parking relief special permits. So three, three references, 9.14B, 9.15C5, 9.15D.
D as in delta?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Diskin, does that work?
Yes. I think we wanna be careful that we do this the right way, and take the time to make sure the findings and any motions we make are related to the exact location in the zoning bylaws for the lo- for the benefit of the board and the applicant.
Yes, and I appreciate that. I really do.
Okay, so, um, I'm willing to make a motion that the planning board accept the three findings, um, in accordance with what was read by Mr. Archimbo, if that's the appropriate time to do that.
Thank you, well, except getting motion and a second puts them on the table to discuss, so we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, motion and a second, um, any discussion? And we can take them all up at the same time.
So that, the only discussion I have is that we're making the determination, basically, that, um, we're gonna separate the, uh, the site plan and the, uh, special permit request, and these are the findings in accordance with our, um, desire to break those two apart, in accordance to the research that we found in the applicant's request and so forth.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and to clarify, it's, it's for the site plan for the building itself at three to five Park Street.
Yep.
I recommend that later, the planning board just, what information they would like to see in terms of a simple site plan for the parking layout itself, uh, for the off-street parking.
Thank you, and if I may, if I may paraphrase Attorney Givens's letter, the, um, special permit, if, if a site plan never comes to us, a special permit, if approved, goes away. Evaporates.
Yeah, it has, oh, it has no effect, you, you need a site plan for three to five Park Street to get a building permit, so.
Exactly.
A special permit, uh, good for two years, so they need to get their approval for the site plan within two years to activate the special permit.
That's July 13th, 2020, so. Okay, thank you. Um, in thinking about this, one of the things that came up in the last meeting and has, um, I think been a bugaboo in my head, and I think it, and I know I've discussed it with at least one other board member, is that, um, we'd like to see a concrete plan for the parking and the use of the space over at, um, Mr. Berry in your, in, in the lot that you're, in Worthingdale. We, we talked about it in, um, broad terms before, but it's kind of hard for, I know it's hard, it's difficult for me, but it may be difficult, and I think it might be difficult for the board members to understand exactly, um, what spaces are going to be where, and how it's gonna be delineated, and that would be a great help to us. Or we can, uh, we can, a map and address that.
Chairman, if I might?
Yes, please.
So, so just a question, I, eh, in my opinion, I think the board potentially could approve the, the concept of the parking spaces on another site, and as part of the site plan, uh, we are required to present to you how we're working the parking, so I think that if the, if the board was inclined to vote tonight, that the, uh, special permit to locate the number of spots across the street, you could do that, and we'd still have to satisfy you, uh, with, for instance, the lease and whatnot at the time of site plan. So one of the important things to the Gardeners is that they, they know that they have the special permit for parking at their site for the number of spots that they need, so that then they, they can then go and have the design and the site plan prepared for their site, because without the parking, you, you really can't design anything on that site. So I suggest that even if you approve the special permit, that doesn't mean that you're giving up the right to say, "Show me those spots, show me, uh, how it's gonna be laid out, and which spots are gonna be reserved as part of the site plan."
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we go too far down that road, I don't believe,
Vote on the findings.
I don't believe the motion on the waivers was acted on, uh, just to get that out of the way, I don't think there was a vote on the three waivers.
Yes.
Finding.
On the three findings, yes, I understand, and I'm sorry. Um, I did, I, and I, I was so dying to dive into the math part of it. Um, I'm trying to get through the meeting too fast, I'm sorry. Um, so, um, shall we, uh, Ken, I believe you made a motion?
Right, I made the motion, it was seconded by Jonathan.
Good.
We're supposed to be discussing, I think, the three findings that we agreed, and with the three findings, as amended by adding, you know, section 9.1.5D to the third paragraph.
Yes.
And then after we vote on the findings, I presume we'd go back to the hearing.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the findings? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions, no, okay, thank you.
Julie is muted.
I know, but I didn't abstain, so, and I was like, yay, and.
Oh. Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, Julie, I think we have to have a, uh, a vocal record.
I'm just impressed Ken noticed, thanks, dude.
I'm watching you very closely. And I'm waiting.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I jumped right in, uh, I'm, I'm guilty of, uh, of wanting to move too quickly through this evening. Okay. Congratulations, I guess, I get to say. So, we've got the findings, that would, I've lost my,
That would enable us to, That's okay, Jeff, it enables us to actually have a conversation about the substance of the permit request now.
Let's go ahead, thank you, I jumped, I already jumped onto that, Jonathan.
So, the topic is, uh, what would the planning board like to see in a site plan for, for the parking, you know, not to be confused with three to five Park Street, the building? And secondly, what is the timing that the planning board would like to require in terms of seeing of a simple site plan, and, you know, to show that the number of spaces that they're seeking is indeed available? And I also believe, uh, that the planning board does not formally determine the exact number of spaces that they will be willing to approve. I know there was some discussion of, uh, the applicant requested that two of the 18 spaces, uh, be, uh, done away with for bicycle accommodation, and I don't think the board acted or voted on that either. Uh, so, board needs to act on the number, or determine the number of parking spaces that will need to be provided off-site, and then decide as to the timing, whether the planning board feels comfortable acting on the special permit this evening, or whether it wants to see a little bit of additional information before acting on the, uh, special permit request.
And, and Mark, I, you know, through the, uh, chair, uh, sorry, Jeff.
Please go ahead.
I, I just wanna remind us that Attorney Givens, before we voted, mentioned that a possibility that he was hoping for, for his client, was that we conceptually consider, you know, just leave it as conceptual understanding, yes, you can have the parking off-site in such a play, uh, such, such a place, without the specifics of that, a plan for the parking, because that could be reviewed at the time of the site plan review. And I was wondering from my colleagues on the board, since he brought that up as a possibility, maybe we could start there, how do we feel about that?
Thank you, Jonathan, you just, I think you just put into words what I was thinking, which is basically, um, without a site plan review and a number of units in front of us, um, we've been talking about 20 spaces, I believe, two of them being, um,
Eighteen.
For given for,
Eighteen, yeah.
Well, I was going the math from the top, is it 18 minus two, or 20 minus two?
It's just 18, period.
Yeah.
There's no bicycle.
Seventeen.
Okay, hold on, I got, I, too many people wanna answer the question, I'm sorry. Attorney, I got two Thomases on the phone, too. Attorney Givens, please.
Thank you, I think that question could be answered by Tom Gardner, so I'm gonna mute myself for a minute.
All right, so seventeen units, so eighteen spaces.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we'd expect to see a site plan for seventeen units, eighteen spaces.
Yeah, seventeen units, up to eighteen spaces, so.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'd like to ask Tom Gardner a question. I believe at the last meeting you, you stated, or in one of the communication, one of the letters, you stated that the, um, you have, you have, you know, the group, your father and yourself, were gonna make sure you had eighteen spaces all the time throughout the period of the 25 years, and pay for the eighteen spaces, even though you, from year to year, you may not use all eighteen spaces, or you'd use them in a variety of uses. Some people may have two, some people had none, but was eighteen spaces all the time, is that correct? Did you get it?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, it's always eighteen spaces, is what I'm getting at. Um, and I mentioned at the last meeting that I think the board, I'm leaning, you know, we're all, I'm leaning obviously towards allowing the off-site use of the parking, but I need to see a drawing, I, I just can't accept the fact from, from Mr. Berry of walking down there and looking around that with no striping on the lot, and, you know, a lot of tenant reserve parking down there, I wanna see some kind of a plan that commits to the location, clearly shown on a plan, a sketch of some sort, doesn't have to be stamped by a, an engineer, by an engineer, just a layout that assures me that it's not just in the language of a concept, because I don't buy the concept at all. And I'd like to see it laid out on the field, and here's the eighteen spaces. So if anyone asks us a question outside of the planning board that says, has a controversy about this, and saying, you know, "You're just giving away parking, you don't know where it is," I want to be able to back that up by saying, "I know where those spaces are right now." And then the secondary piece of that is the clarification with the site plan that would reinforce that, so you'd have two parts, the part we agreed to now, and then we'd show it again on the professional engineer's with his stamp on it. That's my opinion, I can listen to the rest of the board.
Other board members' opinion?
I'll just, I'll just quickly say that what we just approved in the findings was having to do with the ability of the receiving lot to accommodate, right? So I think what Ken's saying addresses the ability, you know, defining the ability of that receiving lot.
In other words, the capacity remains large enough to handle the spaces in the agreement, Nathan?
Right, what our finding said is, is we have to see the, the ability has to be defined, right? And I think, I think that's what Ken has described as well.
Yeah, so one of the questions that came to mind for me as I was thinking this through is use of land changes over time. Mr. Berry, you may get an opportunity to put a multi-level building there, and you may choose to, you may, you may at some point in the future, or a subsequent owner of that property, may want to change the footprint of the building as it stands now. And the question that comes to my mind, and I'm not an attorney, is you have an agreement for 25 years to provide a number of spaces to another building on the street. Should the characteristics of the property change so that the spaces that are currently delineated are no longer available, will those spaces be made available in the future use of the property?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons, Attorney, I'm sorry, Mr., sorry, Tom got his hand up first, but yeah, go.
I can still speak myself, and we would, yes, I would gladly, and I intend to provide the eighteen spaces. I will in fact need excess parking in Depot Square, in which I intend to build a second story of parking ramp, accommodate 80-plus cars. So not only will I need capacity for my tenants, as well as Mr. Gardner's obligation, but I also will need it for my new tenants. So I have been thinking about all of that, and we should have capacity, or will have capacity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, from our perspective, we'll have a lease agreement that we can record a notice of lease, so that, you know, should Mr. Berry sell the property, then that lease would still be there, so the buyer would take subject to our lease, so those spots would be there for the period of time of the lease.
Thank you. So you, so Attorney Gibbons, you are satisfied that that will continue going forward? I can see, I can see Bob Gardner's head going up and down behind you, so yes. The answer is yes, Tom.
Yes, we would have a lease, and I think the submittal says for at least a 25-year period, we'd record a notice of lease, so whatever happens with that property, it's unlikely, even if it was a foreclosure on some future owner, our lease price would still have priority. It couldn't be wiped out for the period of the lease.
Thank you. Other questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, so Mr. Gibbons and the gardeners, that lease would obviously have a parking exhibit, which would be the second follow-up page, Exhibit A, whatever you want to call it, which might show this layout and the reserve, the location of the reserved spaces, similar to what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, it absolutely would, and I guess that's a matter of timing, in my opinion, I say this is based on the bylaw, I don't think it's necessary at this point in time to approve the special permit, because ultimately, as part of the site plan for 3-5 Park Street, under your rules and regulations, we have to provide any proposed provision for shared parking with the budding land uses that may be anticipated, so there's parking requirements of the site plan. So the site plan itself, the 3-5 Park Street, isn't going to show any parking on it, but as part of the submittal, we have to tell you where our parking's coming from. So what I would liken this to is, is if the zoning board of appeals had the authority to grant this special permit or variance, or whatever you might want to call it, we would have gone to them first, before we would have even prepared the site plan, because we need to know that we have the parking. So this is very similar. I think that tonight you could approve the special permit for parking on that site as to the number of spots, and then even if you wanted to include it in the special permit provisions, that the specific location in at least an exhibit plan that shows those spots must be part of the site plan submittal. But I don't think you lose any control if you granted the special permit type for the parking off-site.
Thank you.
I think the gardeners want you to be careful than say that they're asking for a special permit and not a variance.
No, I just.
Don't make the comparison.
No, it's a special permit, right, but just as a matter of the fact, the planning board has the authority in this case, if it was special permitted by ZBA.
I got it.
You know, that comes down to the timing of this whole thing, like, you know, you wouldn't prepare the site plan unless you got the release you needed if it were the ZBA, that's my only point.
Okay.
Any other further comments from the board? So like Mr. Diskin, I like to see things on paper. I also know that Mr., the gardeners have been working at this for a long time, it sounds to me like all parties are in agreement that this will go forward. Ken, I, I, I too, as you know, we've discussed it, would like to see something on paper, but I am personally, I feel that that coming to us at a later time during the site, the site plan, would be acceptable.
I'm okay with the discussion we've had this evening, because as far as I'm concerned, it's on record now.
Thank you. Of course, of course, I would also ask Mr. Berry, or Mr. Gardner, or Mr. Gardner, if you do come up with something and you want to invite us down to take a look at it, we'd love to look at it. It helps the process move forward, if you will.
Sure.
We've done, you've all done a lot of work to get us here, let's not lose the momentum, is I think what I'm saying. Fair enough? Yes, Mr. Berry?
Yes, I think you should definitely be included in the process, and before we, once we, once the gardeners consult with their professionals, I think that we all should meet down at the site and discuss it, and make sure it works for everyone.
Thank you. Any other further discussion from the board?
That's fine with me, too.
Thank you.
Chairman, Mr. Berry's suggestion is fine with me.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, one, a little difficult, because Tom Gardner's not in the same room with us, but just through the chair, I'd like to ask Tom, I believe you had some waivers that you were asking for, too, not that don't require special permit, and I just wanted to make sure if things have changed on that, or did you want to request those now?
I previously discussed the bicycle waiver of the two spots, but I don't know if that was under discussion or not. Section 9.19, the bicycle accommodations, but.
Mark, I'm going to ask you if that's appropriate to be discussed now.
Mark's muted.
Yes.
I was just slow on the unmute. Yes, I think it would be good for the planning board to discuss the bicycle parking request this evening, and that might inform how many spaces they need to show in the simple site plan that we're talking about.
Okay.
Also, yeah, when the time comes, they are requesting a few other waivers for dimensional things, and they're in the staff report, and I'll have to go through and seek those out. That will only come into play when the planning board is ready to act on the special permit request to vote on the special permit.
I thought we had, I thought we had come to agreement that it's 18 spots, I'm a little bit confused about the reintroduction of the waiver for the bicycle thing.
Well, yeah, there are 18 spaces according to the bylaw, one for each unit plus one visitor space, but Section 9.19B, I think, or whatever.
Yeah, I can read it to you right now, I can read it into the record, may I please, Chair, may I?
Please do.
So what it says in 9.19B, a maximum of two required vehicle parking spaces may be used for bicycle parking spaces. Now, to me, it's pretty straightforward, that means of the required spaces, if you choose to, of those 18, you said, you know, we're going to designate them for bicycles, that's fine, but it does not sound to me as if you can use some designated area for the bicycles to count toward your required parking spaces.
I agree. Doesn't change the count, it just gives the tenant, gives the landlord some ability to use a couple of spaces for parking bicycles, if he doesn't have any other place to park bicycles. But this particular application, they showed us in the layout and in the discussion, that they were going to accommodate bicycles within the building. So I think the question is mute, I don't, I don't think it applies at all to the application.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please do.
And Tom, I'd ask you to step in, if I'm not being accurate here. So we had a discussion about this earlier today, and I would agree that what that section does is it allows you to put, I assume, bike racks on up to two spaces to accommodate the bikes. Now, I think we would need, under the bylaw, we would need, I believe, two bike spots, Tom Gardner, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we would need two bike spots, so what we're asking, and we think it could be done in a waiver, is if we could put the bike racks on those two spots, we're short two spots, right? So the net is the same, if we, if you allow us not to have those two spots covered with bike racks, and in fact, we're going to provide bike locations for all 10, or for all the units, one bike spot for all units, and there might even be room for extra bikes. The point being that rather than having bike racks over across the street in two of those spots, it's going to be inside in a room where the, you know, people can use it on, even during the winter, when there's no stone on the ground, it's safer, we're going to provide for way more bikes than is required under the bylaw. So the point being that if we're netting the same number of spots, that's why we're requesting that you not require those two spots that could theoretically be covered by a bike rack.
I just don't agree, sorry, Tom. My feeling is it's 18 spaces, and I also, I'm going to take the opinion that because we're stretching the requirement of parking off-site and spent so much time talking about that, this is a little give and take. I want the 18 spaces and take the bike discussion completely away.
All right, we'll agree with the 18 in deference to the planning board, we just wanted to bring that up, make sure everybody was aware of it. So thank you very much so far, the planning board, and Mr. Grant, and Mr. Diskin in particular.
And one last point, Bob and Tom, you can describe me if I'm wrong, but the other request was to allow the visit, not require a visitor parking because of its location to the garage, but Tom, is that something you're still asking for tonight, just so we cover all the bases?
We're good with 18, as long as we had the ability to present our evidence for the other one.
Does that mean you're going to waive section, strike section one and section three from the special permit application?
Yeah.
Under the overview?
You guys feel that that is appropriate, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, I was going to bring up the visitor parking, because, you know, I think that, I think overall, Mr. Chair, the intent of the town's bylaw is that we don't put up buildings that don't have parking, or don't have, we don't push cars out into the, into the street and other places. So I get that, and I think that we're making good progress with the off, the off-site parking, but I think that it's going to, yeah, we can't waive visitor parking, I wouldn't want to waive it, but it's, I consider it moot if there are 18 spaces reserved at the Worthingale Lot. How one is used for visitors is going to require some logistics for the tenants at the, at the building, but I would, I would, I would require that one parking spot over there be designated a visitor spot 435.
I think, I think that makes sense, and I think that can be, the spot can be marked as such.
Other comments?
We're happy with the 18, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, because, I'll be honest with you, I was working with 18's physical spots across the street, and bicycle storage inside the building, and I was somewhat struggling with the request for the waiver for the spaces. So if I'm, if I'm correct, Tom Gardner, you're removing your request for the waiver for the two spaces for bicycle storage?
Yeah, and for the one space for the, so we're looking for 18 all across, all under the shared parking agreement.
And the 18 under the shared parking agreement will be one space per seven, per units, for 17 units, and one space designated as a visitor space for the residents at 35 Park Street.
Yeah.
Again, the making of laws can be very, very, somewhat ugly sometimes, but I appreciate you taking the time to think it through. Mark, I don't have it in, I don't have it in front of me, Mark, are there other waivers we need to take care of this evening?
Okay, basically, not a waiver per se, but the town council was of the opinion that the planning board needed to make a finding about the reserved parking, and that...
She's wrong.
I know, well, I mean, I should say I know, but in order to, in order to accommodate her opinion, this is from an earlier review, I came up with a finding that addresses that, also a finding that addresses the parking management plan. Other than that, it's not really a waiver per se, I was thinking in my mind, 14 Washington Street has a few waivers because they're requesting parking in front of the building, and a few minor dimensional things like that, where it doesn't really come into play when it's totally off-site. The key question will be is if the planning board is ready to act on the plan tonight, but I will read the two other, I call them preapproval findings in my staff report, I'll read those tonight, I think those are actionable this evening, no matter how the board decides to, whether the board decides to act on the special permit type or not, these two would still apply. So first is, here goes the trains.
Hey, Mark, is this on page five of your?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I did, I did actually bring this one home, it was, it was.
Recommend this to the one above it.
The planning board findings, wait, there goes a train. Sorry, I got my window open. The first of which reads, one, the planning board finds, quote, "Due to the small constrained nature of the site, and the design requirements of the T6 transect of the downtown Park Street Formosa District, that providing reserved parking according to Section 9.8 of the Arizona bylaw is not feasible in this instance," end quote. The planning board waives such requirement for reserved parking, period. Number two, planning board finds that it approves the parking management plan submitted by the applicant as part of the modifications and waivers on the Section 9110C. I would have to modify that, because I called for 16, so we'll just leave it at 18.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Diskin?
Are you all set, Mark?
Yes.
I want to make sure he's done.
Yeah, so basically, the second finding would only be that the planning board finds that it proves the parking management plan, as submitted by the applicant, is part of the modifications and waivers on the Section 9110C. And 9110C references both modifications and waivers together, so I wanted to use that like, even though waivers are not being asked for. Those two findings are on the table. And, yeah, that's all I have for those.
Thank you, Mr. Diskin, do you have a comment? Because I actually have a comment, I'd like to modify one of the second, the preapproval findings, or make a recommendation to the board, go ahead, Mr. Diskin.
I don't think we have to consider these findings at all, and I'm not going to make a motion to consider these findings. I think we just need to vote on the parking management plan as amended to take out the three lines that we've taken out under the parking management overview, and they're a lot there, looks like it's their number two, small i, too. And except the parking management. And accept the parking management plan with those changes and then make a motion on the special permit. That's my own opinion.
Okay. If the planning board is ready to vote on the special permit, I do have a list of the special permit criteria on page six of my staff report because it does mention in the bylaw that for special permits, you have, you know, they follow the general special permit criteria. So I would need to read those into the record. And I also have several draft conditions of approval if the board is ready to act on the special permit request this evening.
Okay, so.
Just one point of clarification for the minutes. I think the section above the reserve parking is nine point one point eight, not nine point eight, but just for the minutes. I want to have that reflected. Thank you.
In the pre-approval findings, yes, if we follow Mr. Diskin's lead, we won't act on these this evening. I'm thinking it through. Ken?
I missed that. Sorry. Could you repeat that? I was looking at the.
In the pre-approval findings, Ken, on page five of Mark's memo.
Yeah, I've got it.
Center of the page, number one, the blue writing.
Yep.
Third line down, section nine point eight, and Attorney Givens believes it's nine point one point eight.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Planning Board, I put that finding about the reserve parking in there at the recommendation of Town Council. That was a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
However, you know, it's my planning opinion that really reserve parking is, as we discussed before, is really a way to reduce the parking spaces in a large commercial setting where you have a large parking lot. It's really not, in my opinion, not applicable to this case, but I thought I would put that in there at her advice. It's up to the board whether they want to do that. The parking management plan still is applicable, obviously.
Yeah, so my feeling about this, if I may, and by all means, board members jump in, is we are working very hard to put together a parking management plan. We don't have the full parking management plan in front of us. I'm struggling with putting findings on top of a parking management plan. As a matter of fact, I'm here trying to re-author pre-approval finding number two to reflect the conversation we've been having. And hearing Mr. Diskin say that he thinks these are probably moot at this point, I'm trying to find a good reason to argue with you, Ken, and I can't.
Because there is no reason.
Okay, in this one case. So I think I'm going to agree with Mr. Diskin that we probably should not include these findings. And go forward with the parking management plan as it will be submitted to us.
We have a submitted parking management plan now. We're talking about that being amended as part of the approval. I think that's the clarification.
I'm sorry, I was, yes, at the end of the gay, we're going to have a physical parking plan, a map or something that will work for us, is what I'm speaking about.
Right.
Tom Gardner, yeah?
And that's to be submitted with the site plan application when we submit for the three five, yeah.
Per the special permit goes away if you never submit. Got it. I'm comfortable with that. Other questions from the board? Mark, flipping for, I'm sorry, move forward. Flipping forward, Mark, the recommended planning board conditions of approval.
Yes, I.
On page six.
If it's okay with the board, I will read the approval findings, as they call it, on page six, which go for all special permits. And after that, I will read the proposed conditions of approval.
Can you give me a second to find that, Mark? Just give me a second.
Take your time, Ken, please.
Should be page six of the document before.
Just below, just below the half of the page, and it has red writing in the second line in the second sentence.
Right, so this is just referring to special permits may be granted or shall be granted by the special permit granting authority upon its written determination. So that's what I will read here. One through six, they go with all special permits. So these are findings, and I will read them into the record, and the board can tweak them or make a motion to accept them. And after that, I can read the proposed conditions of approval, which likewise the board can tweak. Number one, for the finding, so for special permits, social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. The planning board finds that granting the special permits associated with parking and the parking management plan for three to five Park Street promotes social, economic, and community needs by making the site plan for up to seventeen residential one-bedroom units in the downtown viable, which will provide much-needed housing in here's downtown with its social and economic benefits. The planning board finds that the applicant is not able to provide reserve parking. Oh, that one could be struck because we're not dealing with reserve parking.
Thank you.
Last sentence, in this case, it makes the most sense to locate all the required parking spaces off-site, so that's still. Number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Planning board finds that granting the special permits for parking will not have a negative effect or impact on traffic flow and safety. In fact, by eliminating curb cuts for vehicular access, it will help to promote traffic safety by reducing potential conflicts with cars transiting the busy Main Street and Park Street intersection. Number three, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The planning board finds that utilities and public services will not be adversely affected by granting the special permits. Number four, neighborhood character and social structures. The planning board finds that granting the special permits enhances neighborhood character and social structures by providing residences. Number five, impacts on the natural environment. The planning board finds that this project will have little impact on the natural environment due to its location in the urban core of here. No trees or vegetation will need to be removed for the project. Six, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. Planning board finds that granting the special permits will have a positive impact on town services, tax base, and employment due to the economic benefits of having new apartments located in downtown here within walking distance of the commuter rail, downtown, and Park Street. So those are the special permit findings that the planning board should make either in those exact words or modified.
Okay, as you read them, Mark, I actually made some edits to them so we can double-check those going further. And then it goes on to say recommended planning board conditions of approval. Do you want to include that?
Yeah, I could read those next, too.
Please do.
Didn't want to confuse people by just going right away. But so what I have is my draft conditions of approval, which the planning board could add to if they wish. Number one, or bullet point, the applicant owner shall notify the planning board of any changes to the parking management plan at three to five Park Street, and the planning board may require the applicant owner to provide additional information regarding such changes if needed. Number two, the applicant owner will provide a copy of the final signed lease agreement for off-site parking in the Worthingale Realty Parking Lot to the planning department prior to any building permits being issued for three to five Park Street. Number three, pursuant to here concerning bylaw section nine one four B, the off-site and shared parking arrangement agreement, the three to five Park Street and the Worthingale Realty Corporation Parking Lot shall be reviewed by here Town Council and recorded with the property deed prior to any occupancy permits being issued for apartments at three to five Park Street. Four, thereafter, if there are any changes to the conditions of such lease agreement after periodic review by the parties, such revised lease agreement shall be filed with the air planning department. The last condition I wrote up was the applicant shall file a simple site plan with the planning department showing that there is enough area in the Worthingale Park Realty Parking Lot to accommodate eighteen parking spaces, meeting the parking dimensional standards of the air zoning bylaw section nine one five A. This plan must be submitted prior to planning board approval of any site plan for a new mixed-use or residential building at three to five Park Street. And that is what I had for proposed conditions.
Thank you. Comments?
I have two comments.
Please.
One, on number two, for the special permit, traffic flow and safety, I would like to strike the second sentence, starting with, in fact, by eliminating curb cuts. I don't want to make any claims to, to, that the way, way that a building would be done is going to improve safety. In fact, I do have a concern when we get, just so you know, when we get to the actual site plan, I know that under three thousand square feet for commercial space and others, there's no requirement for a birth or loading, unloading zone. But I do find this a concern that, you know, cars, trucks, deliveries will be stopping in front of that building. So I think there's traffic flow and safety germane to the parking of the residents, but I don't want to make any claim about vehicular access and traffic safety in front of the building.
Thank you, Nathan. As a matter of fact, all I could think of when I read number two was how can they get their furniture in and out? Honestly.
Yes.
Having unloaded empty, um, hurts trucks in my life, you know? I was wondering about that. And I'm actually fine with the striking of the, remove the sentence, in fact, by eliminating curb cuts, vehicular access, it will help to promote traffic, traffic safety by reducing potential conflicts with cars transiting the busy Main and Park Street intersection. I have a feeling that that has to do with turning in and out of the streets at that point, but I also thought about it as, you know, someone's got a moving van, they're going to have to stop and park. So I'm okay with striking the language out of number two. Other comments for any other board members?
I agree with Nathan's comments, but in fact, it's a fact that we don't even know if there's going to be any curb cuts now because we haven't seen a site plan. That's literally the only fact we know.
Okay. So I've struck that sentence. So the number two now reads, the planning board finds that granting the special permits for parking will not have a negative impact on traffic flow and safety. And it's going to stop there. Other, the one before it, under social, economic, community needs which are served by the proposal. Mark, you were reading through it. It said, the planning board finds that granting the special permits associated with parking and the parking management plan for three dash five Park Street promotes social, economic, and community needs by making the site plan for up to, and that's going to say eighteen, I'm sorry, for seventeen residential one-bedroom units in the downtown viable, which will provide much-needed housing in here's downtown with its social and economic benefits. You then said, strike the next sentence. Since that sentence did read, the planning board finds that the applicant is not able to provide reserve parking at three dash five due to the small nature of the lot and limited room to accommodate both the anticipated building and parking lot, parking on the lot. So you want to strike that entire sentence?
Yeah, that was because we're not considering reserve parking as pertinent to the case.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Diskin?
I think the only thing you have to, my, in my, my thought on this is the only thing that needs to be struck is the word reserve.
You and I are of a like mind, sir.
The planning board finds that the applicant is not able to provide parking.
Exactly.
You just take out the word reserve and then it fits.
Oh, all right. That's a good idea.
And I'm just.
Everyone else agrees. Again.
No, that, you're reading my, over my shoulder, Ken.
Okay.
There's not enough social distancing here. But yeah, I stuck with the word reserve. And so the applicant, so I would like it to read, please, and going the rest of the board members, it should read, the planning board finds that granting the special permits associated with parking and the parking management plan for three dash five Park Street promotes social, economic, and community needs by making the site plan for up to seventeen residential one-bedroom units in the downtown viable, which will provide much-needed housing in here's downtown with its social and economic benefits. The planning board finds that the applicant is not able to provide parking at three dash five Park Street due to the small nature of the lot and limited room to accommodate both the anticipated building and the parking, and parking on the lot. In this case, it makes the most sense to locate all the required parking spaces off-site. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. I know I read fast, guys. I'm sorry if I lose you.
With emphasis on all.
Yes. Further down, I was wondering, in the parking special permits for three dash five Park Street, the conditions of approval, and you nailed it by adding the pursuit, the fourth bullet point. But I was, when I read the second bullet point, I'm sorry, the third bullet point, you nailed it by sending a recorded copy, because that's the first thing that came to mind for me is the second bullet says, the applicant owner will provide a copy of the final signed lease agreement for off-site parking in the Worthingale Realty Parking Lot to the planning department prior to any building permits being issued for three dash five Park Street. And I would assume, and Attorney Givens, you can tell me this if you're going to do the closings, I would assume that you probably wouldn't go to record with the first copy of the parking agreement. So you put the first deed to record, correct?
Well, so these are going to be a part of, so the one deed from the gardeners, and we'd record it, well, we'd record it at that point in time, right?
So in the chronology, would it be available before the building is done?
Yes. Will have, the deed will be recorded prior to any construction.
Good. And you, and you expect to also have a final signed lease agreement at the same time for the parking?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think the language, go ahead, sir.
And we, our plan would, I don't think we need to clarify this, but I think Town Council would agree, but we wouldn't record the whole lease. We would record a notice of lease.
Exactly.
About a page and a half that says, hey, we have a lease for this period of time, these many spots.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I just, my experiences with condominiums, and oftentimes a condominium association doesn't exist until the first sale.
Right.
In the first recording. So I just wanted to make sure that that was going to go hand in glove. I don't see the language in here precluding anything you're planning on doing in my limited experience. So I'm going to, I've got no trouble with, yes?
Do we have to get in the number, the eighteen in here, or is that not important at this point within this particular language?
Is that open to the board?
I think it's very important. It's, it is, it defines the word all in number one.
Right, I would recommend that under one of the findings that the sentence that the planning board finds that eighteen parking spaces are required for this project.
I agree.
Add that to one of the findings.
Do you have a recommendation on to which number it should be under?
So you know what, if I may, the second bullet under parking special permits, three dash five Park, Park Street? The applicant owner shall notify the planning board of the eighteen parking spaces included in the parking management plan and any subsequent changes.
That sounds pretty good to me. Are we waiting on just confirmation from other members?
I may have said very quickly, Mark, I agree. So the first bullet, the applicant owner shall notify the planning board of the eighteen parking spaces included in the management plan and of any subsequent changes. Will that work for you, Mark?
Yes.
We've done a lot of work on this this evening. I'll be honest with you, I'd like to get a clean copy to look at. I'll be honest with you, I'd like to get a clean copy to look at. How does the board feel about where we are? I hate to take a straw poll, but I have a feeling we've done a lot of work in order, in order to move. I can see that, Mr. Krantz, thank you very much. What's your level of comfort, board members, with going forward with a vote on this this evening without the final language in front of you? I know that's a tough question.
I'll comment.
I'm sorry?
I will make a comment.
Please do.
If you want to go around the table, starting with me, then making sure Julie's included. So I'm comfortable with it, with the assumption, not the assumption, with the knowledge that the chairman and the board will sign it at the next meeting. So we would vote on it tonight. The amended language would be created in the next two weeks for all of us to take a look at before the next meeting as it's electronically sent to us. And then it would get officially signed at that point, authorization for signature, whatever the state requirement is now under the law. So they could leave tonight with an assurance that they have an approval. But we need to take the two weeks to get the whole double check that we have got the conditions and the findings in accordance with what we've discussed tonight. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Other comments? Julie held her thumb up, so I'm going with that's it. Yes. Thanks, Julie. Nathan or Jonathan?
Yeah, I agree. I think that, sorry, Jonathan. That I didn't know which way the table went here. Brady Bunch style. But I think I agree, the, as Ken said earlier, I'm, I'm heavily on public record, right? We, we had discussion, we're making decisions in good faith, but also Heather's being very careful to write it all down. So I, I'm comfortable.
Thank you. I will ask the gardeners and, I'm sorry, Jonathan, yes?
Oh, yeah, I just said, so I just want to say, I agree with the statements for my previous colleagues. And as long as we feel confident that we're talking about eighteen spaces and that that this would evaporate if the site plan never materializes or the construction doesn't materialize, I'm content with this. Yes.
Thank you very much. I will, I, I, I want to thank the gardeners for bringing us a project and a problem to think through. Every time, it seems like every time we change our zoning bylaws, the first, the first thing out of the gate is always a change. I'll ask Attorney Givens and the gardeners, is this okay with you? Given the current way we're doing stuff, processes, I can't actually wait for a copy to get done and approved this evening, but would it be okay with you?
Yeah, that would be fine with us. And, you know, the conditions, the word smithing of that is fine, but we're comfortable with all the conditions that we're talking about tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And we will do our best, Attorney, to make sure you get a copy as soon as possible so we're all on the same page. And, okay, with that, yeah.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate all your time and hard work and effort.
Thank, we're not yet, we're not done. We got, we got, we gotta have a vote now. We think we know where it's going, but we didn't know four years ago. Go ahead. With that, if it's okay with the rest of the board members, I'd accept a motion. If someone would like to make it to include the findings and the conditions of approval for these. Mark, I want to make sure I get this correct, and Ken, even more. So special, the approval for the, for the special permit request for the parking management plan for three dash five Park Street.
Yes.
So we'll make sure we get the right citations correct.
Right.
We're gonna work on the language. I've got my notes here. Okay.
Yes, I would just ask anybody who did take notes, because the train was going by and people are beeping out the window. I didn't hear everything, so please send me any notes that you have and send me and Heather the notes and we'll type it up.
Thank you.
Do we also need a vote on the waivers too?
Victor, I don't know. You're right, you know, probably.
Heather, I believe those two waivers were, were dropped.
But weren't there three waiver requested?
The third waiver request wasn't for the special parking, the parking management plan.
Okay. So just to make sure we're making, we're making a vote for that waiver request then with the findings and the conditions as a three separate things, because the waivers request, you need to vote for the waiver.
Tom, am I correct in saying that of the three waiver, Tom Gardner? Am I correct in saying that the other waivers request, I've now been withdrawn? We're only working on the parking management special permit request?
Yeah, we're only working on the shared parking aspect. Yeah, yes.
You say tomato, I say tomato. Let's call the whole thing off. No, I'm kidding. Okay. And some of these make
Did I just say so moved, or do I have to repeat everything that you said?
No, I would go with the so moved.
So moved. So I moved it. Okay.
And by the way, you are over there in my life, not over here. Do you have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Nathan. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Sorry, I keep bumping my microphone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, board. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Givens, and Mr. Berry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I believe this concludes the the hearing for the special permit.
Yes.
For three dash five Park Street, am I correct?
You need to make a motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, exactly. I'm asking to make sure there's nothing else. I'm gonna give Mark a chance to make sure. Are we at that point, Mark?
Yeah, not, not for this one.
I'm sorry?
We're all set for this agenda item.
Okay.
I have a question, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Diskin.
I don't think we should close the hearing until we sign the document, you know, at the next meeting, then officially close. Does that make sense?
I have twenty-one days to draft and get the special permit signed and brought down in the clerk. So typically, we keep, we close the hearing before that, just to keep that timeframe. I have, I have, I'm sorry, fourteen days. So I won't make it to the next meeting. It has to be done by Monday before the meeting because of the timeline for special permits approval.
That's why I think we should keep it open. She just gave me the answer.
Yes, she did. Thank you very much, Heather. So I'm going to ask for a motion to continue so that we don't put you guys in jeopardy by not working, by not getting this thing signed before the next meeting.
Does that make
So moved.
Do you understand what we're doing, Attorney, Attorney Givens?
I do. So, so you voted tonight to approve the special permit. We're leaving it open so you can get the word smithing and everybody can approve that at the next meeting. That'd be fine.
Exactly. I'd like to do it in the light of day. So I'm sorry about coronavirus, man. I wish, I wish that we weren't doing it this way. Okay?
I'd like a second, but Attorney Givens could have just given the thumbs up like I do.
Yeah. Attorneys get paid by the word, Julie. Come on.
Fair, fair.
Sorry. Anyway, so a motion to continue, please?
So moved.
You did that. I seconded it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Now we get to the real, the real guts of the meeting. Congratulations, Mr. Gardner and Mr. Gardner. Careful what you hope for. I'm really excited about this project. I'm, I'm hoping it's a great success.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your faith and confidence and time. I really do. You have a lot of good questions and I think you're gonna be proud ultimately. And I want to take this very too publicly for having faith in a fellow, you know, air resident.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna move us along so we can stay within our allotted time. Hour and a half, correct?
We have about nine minutes, according to the
Okay, so.
Do you need motions to continue the public hearings for fourteen Washington Street and Air Solar Two?
Yes.
Please go.
And you need them in order? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit for fourteen Washington Street to our next planning board meeting on the twenty-eighth of July, 2020.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next one too, you need, right?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Like a, a motion to continue the site plan review for fourteen Washington Street through, through our next meeting, air planning board meeting, July twenty-eighth, 2020.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I?
Please.
I make a motion that we that we continue the review for the amended site plan, Air Solar Two B for our next meeting of the air planning board on July twenty-eighth, 2020.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. This board's great about seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Okay, I'm gonna open this up. We've got town plan announcements, board reorganization, old business, new business, and a moving meeting approval. I'd like to recommend we do the reorganization if I may go out of order.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Jeff Tilson as chairman of the planning board for the next twelve months.
Jeff, is that what you want? I mean, I'm confused. Is that, I just want to know where we are. Who wants what?
I will, I, I every single member of this board is capable of being the chair. We've looked at what's coming up ahead of us, and I think some of the stuff is put some of the members of the board in a tough spot if they had to chair the meetings.
Okay. I'd like to second the previous motion. Yes. I'd like to second the motion, please.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
A blessing and a curse. Thank you.
Yes, we've had this conversation. We, we, I would like to nominate Julie Murray for, no.
I show up.
I know. Like to nominate Mr. Diskin. Is it vice chair or co-chair? Vice chair, excuse me, of the planning
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like how no one asked Ken if he wanted to continue in that role.
I don't care.
Read between the lines. Ken's the MVP. Ken, he's taking in all these
Without him, we're lost.
I like the lighting in this room, the way it does, it's my hair just
That halo.
At least you can't, you can't see, every time Bonnie helps with my hair, she says, oops, I can't even look. And by, and by, by the way, thank you all for your, so we need a
I'll nominate Jonathan Krantz to be the clerk for the planning board for the next twelve months.
Seconded.
Is Jonathan interested?
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. I'm not kidding when I say this. Anybody sitting in this virtual room is capable of being chair or, or vice chair or clerk, and I appreciate all the work that you all do. And I know the town appreciates it greatly for you. So, Mark, excuse me, Mr. Diskin, do you have any old business you want to talk about right now? Or should we let Mark do an update if he has one?
I'd like to have Mark do his thing, yes.
Go ahead.
The only update I have is we, we received a letter from Mass Development stating that the joint town meeting for the Vicksburg Square disposition not take place this fall, so.
Yes.
That, that, I think we forwarded that to you today. We just got it today, so I haven't really looked at it closely, but whatever reasons, they're not doing it this year.
Um, a lot of reasons. Having super town meeting is gonna be a real hassle. Probably number one. Number two, the letter is written to the town of Harvard or Devens. It refers to us in the third person, so it's okay, but it's okay. Yeah. It looks like Vicksburg Square has kind of hit the brakes for a while, and that may not be a bad idea, a bad thing in my mind. New business, anybody? Old business, Mr., I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I just, I'm really appreciative of the, the, the street work and the Depot Square work going on in town. Great progress this year to the town of Air.
I actually got, for the first time the other day, I rode my bike back through Depot Square, and I stopped to look at what's going on. And the last time I looked was a couple of months ago, and it's, it looks really nice. It's beginning to take shape and take form. And I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be in a situation, we'll be able to enjoy it together at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Agreed.
Yeah. New business, anybody? Go ahead.
Oh, just want to underline what Nathan said. I, I, you know, because I live on Washington Street, so I've been watching the construction. I just want to say how impressed I've been by the quality of the construction work. You know, just, it wasn't just a rip and replace, you know, they actually lifted up all the granite and resettled them in and secured them with concrete. It was a sophisticated job, and their attention to detail has been very impressive.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm sure the DPW will appreciate that. I think they did a great job. And what I loved about it, honestly, is I was coming down the street two days after it was done. They were removing all of the bric-a-brac, if you will. All the other stuff's gone. It was, it was great to see that done. New business, anybody? Do we want to take a minute and approve the minutes from June twenty-third? Jonathan, thank you so much for going through them.
You're welcome.
Again, I appreciate it. I'd like to ask a couple of questions now that we're alone in the virtual room. I didn't get a chance to scour the new version all the way through, but which ones did I print out? Spelling of names. Did we catch them all, Jonathan?
I changed
Yeah, Mr. Berry's name, Mr. Burchard's name. Okay.
You got Mr. Burchard? Okay, because I think that was incorrect. Yeah, I wasn't sure about that.
I can fix that one.
Okay, thank you. Having said that, I'm more than willing to take a motion to accept the minutes as corrected and distributed. If we're not ready, let me know.
I'm, so moved.
Seconded, thank you. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.